We're live. Hey, everybody. Great Saturday night. The twenty, it's tw- twenty eighth of December, is that right Nancy?
That's correct.
That's, that's the twenty, right, the twenty eighth, the twenty eighth of, of this month and wow. Nancy, how you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you very much, Zinni. Great talking to you.
Yeah, folks, for those of you who are not aware, this is my longtime friend. I can say it because now, because we know each other awhile. Uh, Nancy Sidebotham. I am talking to her right now in her current guise as candidate for the two thousand twenty Oakland City Council at-large seat race against the incumbent Rebecca Kaplan. And Nancy ha- is, uh, I think it's fair to say, I think it's fair to call you Oakland Politico eh?
Uh, yes, sir.
Cool.
Very.
And so we'll, we'll, we'll start right off the bat Nancy, you and I obviously know each other, but for those who may be uh, under a rock or, uh, tell us and them about yourself.
Uh, I've lived in Oakland. I came here in nineteen sixty-four. I went to Cal State Hayward, went to Merritt College when it was on, uh, Grove Street. And in the eighties, early eighties, I got involved in Oakland politics. Um, having to do then with the old animal shelter. And from then worked my way up getting involved in other issues within the city. And saw that the representation of the city, um, needed to be addressed. That, uh, people didn't understand what was going on, that they were played against. And the fact that it's been a controlled city all these years by a few men that have controlled the mayor's office and those appointments to the council. It has hurt the city as a whole. And when I came here, we had Mervins, we had J.C. Penney's, we had Capwells, we had Rhodes, we had many, many stores downtown was thriving. Nobody was afraid to go anywhere and, uh, it started going downhill after the seventies. When people started getting displaced and Oakland became a city where others saw a way of making money real fast and started displacing the people that had been here for awhile. And I saw the, what was happening and I started learning and educating myself and getting involved. And from then, I've run for a city council district six a number of times. I've run for the mayor's office a couple of times. I've run, this will be my second time running for at-large, I think. And the reason I run is because I educate. But I'm one of those people that nobody wants to see in office. And the few that do want to see me in office won't know that I care and that I will fight for the rights of all of Oakland. And not for just a few or line the pockets of a few of my friends that want to get me in office. So this is the reasons I run. This is why I've been involved. And I will continue to stay involved no matter what happens because I love this city. I believe in this city. And Oakland has a future if we can just find the right people to put in office to bring it out of the hole that it's gone into.
You sort of answered this, but, um, I think more specific to this specific race, uh, and this gets to my second question. What was the aha moment that caused you to want to run to say, okay, I'm gonna run for this specific seat for twenty twenty?
The reason the re- the reason that I'm running for the at-large seat is that we have had somebody in office a number of times, Rebecca's not the only one, but a number of times where they get in office and they sit there. They do not work for the city of Oakland. They, uh, Rebecca, in this case, has passed ordinances and pushed, uh, measures on the ballot that are hurting a majority of the people in Oakland. And it's gentrifying Oakland right and left. Rebecca has not gone out there and gotten her feet dirty and walked the streets. She stood in the last, last time that she ran for office, she stood in front of a pile of, a pile of garbage. And guess what? After she left that pile of garbage in East Oakland, it sat there for a couple of weeks after that. So we, you, we need people in office that are going to say they're gonna do something and do it. Not sit there and make, you know, yes, yes, and, uh, I care when in fact they really don't. And they are, their head is in another location and that's Rebecca's problem.
Hey, can you, I, I, this is a side question, but it's related to something you just said. Can you take the inside baseball more out to the stadium and explain what you were to s- describe with that quote pile of garbage?
Well, um, Ken Houston brought up an issue, uh, before the at-large uh, election four years ago about garbage in East Oakland and a dead dog that was laying there. And Rebecca took herself out there and stood in front of it and got herself on television. And that's as far as it went. So she takes opportunities. She sounds like she's going to do something because she knows how to speak. But unfortunately Rebecca does not pass through taking care of business. And when she does, it's ver- it's verbal and verbiage and laws being passed at council that affect way too many people without thinking of the consequences for the whole city of Oakland. And that's, that's where this is coming from.
It, uh, that kind of gets to my other question. Uh, Rebecca Kaplan, Oakland City Council, current council president, uh, and also in full disclosure, an active Oakland News Now blogger, as is Nancy, um, is, or rather appears to be endorsement rich. Uh, how can you beat, how can you beat her? It's the question. How can you beat her?
Uh, I talk to the people. I mean, the people, if, if, if the people continue to allow the laws being passed where they don't vote and all they do is complain, then there's no way you can beat her because people vote incumbents. People do not bother to think out or bother to learn. All they can do is complain, but they need to get out and make a difference because that's how you make change. You, if you look at other countries that are out there, Hong Kong and other countries that are out there demonstrating right and left. Here, we sit and complain about it. And rarely do we get up and, and, and make a statement to bring the change about. Rebecca got a, got into council because of the, of the backing of the couple of men in this town. They got her on AC Transit and then she got into, this, when she ran for, for District Five, she, and she was a, she was a, uh, a member of another party. And now all of a sudden she turned Democrat and she's, she runs around acting like she really cares about Oakland when in fact she doesn't. Rebecca has no interest in really caring about Oakland. She just passed laws to help certain people. I mean, how can you sit on the council and dislike the police department? And yet not do anything for the homeless? And out there and, and, and pick and choose what your battles are when you're, when you're representing over four hundred thousand people?
Uh, you s- I just, that, that begs the question, which party would she member of? Was it Green Party?
The Green Party.
Green Party, okay.
And trust me, she probably still is.
And, uh, I'm gonna put this question in between. This is one of the two uh, and slotted in the other ones that we discussed off camera. But, um, Oakland has among other things a climate change policy. And there are a number of people who have their takes on what the local response should be to the climate change issue. Uh, what's your thought on that? What's, what do you think Oakland's local response to the climate change problem should be?
Well, the first thing we need to do is look at the, where the water level is. I mean, what's it, ten feet below the Colosseum?
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen feet?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, uh, trust me, the Colosseum and that whole area is gonna be underwater in probably the next twenty-five to thirty years. So, I mean, and we have no choice. If we don't start looking at building walls. If we don't like Denmark, if we don't like start looking at protecting ourselves and cleaning up the environment. We, we, climate change is, is something that, you know, nobody really thinks about. That's one of the questions I ask with Australia burning down.
Mm-hmm.
The Amazon burning down. The, uh, the, the different forests over in Africa burning down and stuff. Guess where our oxygen comes from? The trees. Doesn't just automatically appear. So we're burning down what, what makes us tick in this, in this world. So when you're looking at climate change, Oakland seriously needs to start looking about where their, where their water tables are and how they're going to protect that area. We're doing a lot of building in Jack London. Now we're gonna put supposedly the Colosseum, the A's are gonna build a stadium down there at the port.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you've got a Colosseum here and if you go ten feet down, you're at the, you're at the water table. That's why the sewers don't work that well down there. I mean, if you look at all of this and we're not discussing how we're going to protect that, how we're gonna protect our base there. And it's not just Oakland, it's Berkeley, it's all the way down along the bay because the water's going to come up. And those are the things we need to start looking at, talking about it and talking about getting cars off the streets and everybody riding a bicycle and this kind of stuff. That's just part of, uh, an end solution. That's not fixing the problem that's gonna come and it's gonna be too late by the time the water starts drifting up over the banks.
Hey, riddle me this Nancy. Is it that the water coming up is in where it's going, pretty much the same as where it was? Prior to a forty-two, well, forty-two years ago, we started this infill development in the bay. Uh, cause I remember this map, I forgot who produced the map, but the map stood out in my brain as stating that if we continue on this rate of infill development, what I mean by infill development folks are people taking landfill, putting it in the bay and then creating new platforms upon which, you name it. Freeways, shopping centers.
Race track in Berkeley, the racetrack in Berkeley.
Are built, right. And they said that.
El Cerrito.
Right, and they said that, yeah. And they said if we continue, it would look like a river. My point is, is there something going on where maybe that landfill just isn't holding up and nature's starting to sense fight back? I mean.
You know something? The earth is based on rock and different types of, uh, of magma and different types of, uh, soil derivatives. And it's not just based on dumping dirt into a location because guess what? Dirt moves.
Mm-hmm.
Dirt, it doesn't have stability. If you've put dirt in the backyard on a hill and you have rainwater coming down, eventually that water is going to wash the dirt down the hill. And then you're gonna block whatever's at the bottom of the hill because it's gonna settle in the lowest spot, the lowest pot. And so that's part of the problem. So when you're doing infill, when they were doing all that infill, you were closing the bay out. It, it, they had to stop that because they were taking away the, 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 um, the science of the, of what cleaned the bay.
Mm-hmm.
And that's part of the, and that was a problem then and that's why they stopped pretty much doing it. And then they started cleaning it up and opening it up so that they could have the, uh, the, the, the brush on that, I can't think of what the, what with the vegetation grows back because it's a cleaning process for the water. And this is part of, this is part of science and, and we don't teach science in school anymore. So we have no basis of understanding all of this.
Well, put, my next question is, um, are you finished with that one? Do you want to add something else before I shift? I just kind of felt that, heard that little.
No, I'm okay. I'm okay.
Okay, you have a distinctive twang when you want to say something. I thought maybe I heard it. But.
Well, I may have, but if I, if I do, I'll come back to it.
You got it. Uh, what is, uh, the, what's your take on what the future of Oakland sports should be? And I asked that question because as I said the other day, here I am three thousand miles away in, in suburban, suburban Atlanta, Georgia. And from my perspective, Oakland's visibility has diminished because by, unlike when the Warriors played last year. Where you heard even out here, Golden State Warriors will take on the Atlanta Hawks at Oracle Arena in Oakland. You don't hear Oakland anywhere near as much. And so that's several times a day in this household alone that's taken away multiplied by the number of households in the United States. That's millions of times a day that people will hear Oakland, their households that are just gone. What do we do about the future of sports in Oakland? How do we replace that instant advertising that we have just given up without, in my opinion, a care or thought?
Well, remember fifty years ago, we allowed certain people to come in here and elected officials. And they sold Oakland out years ago. And it used to be privately.
Can you elaborate, can you elaborate on that please?
Um, I can't think of the names of the individuals right now. Uh, who's the guy that had the coffee?
Uh, peerless coffee, I mean? Uh, George McConaughey?
Uh, no, not because, no. I can't think of his name right now, but you know, Parada and all those guys were involved in all of this. They sold out. That's why the Raiders left because they couldn't get their way.
Mm-hmm.
They, the city put money into it, the county put, and then, uh, the, uh, private, private, private people were running the Colosseum. And then all of a sudden the A's, I mean, the, the Oakland and the Colo- and, uh, the, the county took over. And, uh, they started milking it out through the parking and stuff and never bothered to fix the infrastructure and build it up again. And we finally got the Warrior, uh, the Warriors and over here, we've got the, we got the Raiders back and stuff, but loans were given out. And it's cost both the county and the city millions of dollars. And yet it's been poorly run by individuals. Those are the first thing about running a business. And just like a city and the Colosseum and sports, it's a business. And unless you know what you're doing, you should not be into that business. You give it to people that know what the heck they're doing. And that's part of the problem that we're in the position we're in. Will we get sports teams back here again? Probably not in this ti- in this lifetime, but probably in the near, in the future we might. But that again has to do with climate change and if we have the property with which to build the stadiums and have the locations for these sports teams. You know, there's a lot of ifs in all of this. And a lot of people made money off of how the Colosseum complex has been run over the years and who's borrowed what from whom. And the money's still owed back and it still hasn't been paid. And nobody's really following up on that. They're complaining about it. Yes, we went to court, but you know something? We don't have the people running the city of Oakland that really have the, the, the guts to do their job and to fight for the right reasons. And that's part of the problem. Like sports teams, you know, un- until we find people that are going to sit there. Again, it's the voters that have a say in all of this and who they put in office. And the people that are getting in office now, they're all nonprofit people. They're not interested in sports teams. They're not interested in what's really going on in Oakland. And again, they're not business people. So they don't know the first thing about how to run a business, just like Oakland has no economic base. And the fact that the, that the supervisors just sold their half uh, to the A's for a loss. I mean, they should have sold it for top, but no, they sold it for a loss and the A's want to build housing. That location should be the biggest business park in this area. Oakland does not have any business park. We have no jobs. That's why we have so much theft going on. Otherwise these kids are out there getting into all kinds of trouble is because we have no place for these kids to go to work. So I mean, there's a lot of issues that this comes into play. It's not just, you know, when, where the sports teams are. It's how it's affecting the whole city and the area around it.
I have to ask you, we were referring to, just for clarification, ninety-six, the ninety-five deal that brought the Raiders back to Oakland from Los Angeles when you were talking about, because, because during that time and when the PSLs went south in ninety-six, it was Ignacio De La Fuente called for a reorganization such that the JPA as we know it today, uh, was created, you know? So you're referring to that, right?
Again, 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 uh, politics got involved in that and it wasn't there's Ignacio that came up with that idea. It was Don Parada and company who got us in all this mess to begin with.
Okay, just, I'm just clarifying, that's all. Um.
I know.
Uh, okay, so.
And I'm adding to it.
Oh, right on, yeah. So shifting from there, although I have to say Nancy, for those of you watching this, uh, was kind enough to be one of fourteen mayoral candidates to attend, uh, my Oakland Sports Forum in two thousand fourteen. And so if you want to get, uh, a listen to and a view of some of her past views on this, which, you know, align with her current view, obviously. Uh, it's right here at Zinni sixty-two on YouTube. Uh, and I want to thank Nancy publicly for coming out and participating in, I thought, what was incredible. Uh, incredible night of politics and sports. Thank you.
Yes, it was.
Um, okay, now I'll stop tuning my own horn for a second. Uh, it was back to the questions. What is your idea to solve our homeless problem?
You know something? I keep telling people to eat, to read Atlas Shrugged by Anne Rann. We're living that now. If you go to most other countries in Latin America and a lot of other countries.
Elaborate, I, I, look, I have, I was, I ran, I was an objectivist for all of two years of my life, but for those who have no idea what you're talking about, please elaborate.
Who, was Anne Rann?
Yes, ma'am.
Anne Rann, I, she has a philosophy, huh?
Do you consider yourself an Orangian?
No, no. I just love the book.
Hmm, okay.
Atlas Shrugged. I have, I, I know she has a philosophy and stuff, but no, I'm not, I don't follow her philosophy. I just read the book and it's like reading, uh, nineteen eighty-four. We've already been through that. I mean, Anne Rann described where we are, not necessarily at this time in her book, but guess what? We're there. We've got, uh, the politicians in Washington. We've got a few people that have billions of dollars that are owning everything and don't pay taxes and are controlling everything behind the scenes. And we have the homeless. And we have people barely making it because of the way we've allowed this country to go down the tubes. So that's where I'm coming from when I say to read Atlas Shrugged.
I have to fill that in as a person who was a objectivist for two years of my life between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one and not even a, a perfect one at that. But, uh, what Nancy is referring to is a philosophy of what is, I do what's good for me. And in the action of me doing what's good for me, you benefit. But that's, that is the coldest definition of objectivism. So there you go. Okay. There you go. Okay, Nancy. So again, you're regarding your answer regarding homelessness. Go ahead.
So regarding the homeless, the homeless really is a county issue. They ha- they have the Health and He- and Human Services Department to take, that, that should be taking care of this. But unfortunately, they dumped on the cities and all the other cities surrounding Oakland that dumped on Oakland. And including Berkeley, who used to have a major homeless issue over the years with People's Park, et cetera. And when Gene Kwan opened up City Hall in front of City Hall to, uh, the, the, the issue back then. That it opened the doors and we've never been able to ma- manage the issue since then. Yes, uh, prices have gone up, rents have gone up. Jobs, um, are not keeping up with the pay scale to, in order for people to afford. But you know something? We again have elected the officials that have allowed this to happen. And we need to change that. We need to write. I said to somebody at a meeting a couple of months ago. If people in Oakland all stop paying their property taxes, trust me, somebody's gonna listen. If we don't start taking a stand and getting out and voting and we take a position and we have continued to, uh, to re-elect incumbents that have done nothing for us but speak and yes, they can raise money because guess what? They've got the title. They've got the power at the moment. But that doesn't mean they're going to have it tomorrow if they aren't in office to have it. And we, the people, have the right to make changes. We just don't come out and do it. And the homeless issue is a major problem and it's a problem all over the country. But it's a problem more in warmer areas and that's why a lot of these people are not from Oakland. Even though they, they put it out that they are, they are not from Oakland. They come in from other areas. They come in from other states because they've got the climate here for these people to be able to absorb living out on the streets and stuff. Again, Oakland's got a main problem and it's two of them. Oakland has no money. What money they do bring in, they do not spend on the resources that need to be spent on. Two, crime pays big time in Oakland. That's why they will never clear, clean, clean crime up because it brings up too much grant money into the city. And they can't afford to lose that because they have no other, no other base to fall back on. When Ignacio was in office, he passed an ordinance blocking big boxes from coming to Oakland. And that right there, when Home Depot was going to come across in the Colosseum there where the Lexus is. That was blocked from them coming here. Every, every major company that has come in here, other than Home Depot that is barely holding on has left because of the theft problem that Oakland has. Oakland has a theft culture. And we don't have the resources to make sure that this issue is taken care of. The police hands are tied because we don't want to upset the apple cart and go after the people that are actually doing the crime. So the frustrating part about Oakland is we've got a city with no money and what money is coming in and they're getting a lot of money for the homeless, which they're not spending on the homeless. This is stuff that needs to be questioned by the public and why we're having the problems we're having. The fact that our streets have been falling apart for years, the fact that they have not, uh, gone and painted our streets with the white lines and the stops signals and stuff on this, on the ground and stuff. We've, we're paying for that. That money is there in our budget, but that's not what it's being spent for. The fact that Libby in the last budget that she, that just got passed by Rebecca and council gave seventy-four million dollars to OUSD. OUSD who cannot spend their money correctly and overpay their, their directors and management staff versus paying the teachers a decent salary.
Oh, that's Oakland Unified School District, folks.
That's Oakland Unified School District? We have serious problems and nobody's asking the hard questions. Yes, Oakland has a ton of money. In fact, the state, what, six hundred and fifty million they're giving away to all the counties and all the cities that are having homeless problems and stuff to help them with housing and stuff? Oakland's getting a part of that, but have you seen housing going up anywhere? No. And the housing that's being built is, I mean, one bed, one, a one-bedroom apartment down in the Rockridge area is going for eight thousand dollars. So I mean, we, we get serious problems here and no one's questioning this. We're all looking the other way and the few people that are speaking up. I mean, we're losing, we're losing a great city administrator. Because Oakland can't get its act together. Why should people stay in Oakland that know how to run this city? Every other city around us. San Jose, that used to be a sleepy agricultural town. Look at it now. Guess who built up San Jose? People that originally worked at Oak- Oakland. Terry Roberts and company. Emeryville.
Terry Roberts was the head of Public Works for some, some time.
Public Works years ago.
Very popular, very good man.
Yes. And, and look at Emeryville, look at Walnut Creek. All these people, many of those people worked in Oakland. And they left because guess what? Oakland doesn't want to move forward. It was a control, it's a controlled city by a few white men that are making millions of dollars off the backs of the people here in Oakland causing gentrification. And they're doing it today thanks to people that had, that, that once was a mayor in Oakland and now is controlling the city behind the scenes. And we have a mayor now that has not a clue what she's doing. So that's my say to me.
Who is, uh, the previous mayor that you're referring to? We know who the current mayor is, but who was the other person?
Jerry Brown is running Oakland, not, not Libby.
The, the now former California governor, okay.
Yes.
I have to ask you regarding the homeless si- situation. And this follows up on a conversation I had with, uh, Stephanie Dominguez Walton. And is going to be pretty much standard fare for me considering it happened to me and it's happened to other people. And it's that, it's one thing to see on Facebook as you have and I have. Someone have their car smashed into and their items stolen. But it's quite nothing for it to happen to yourself. It happened to me when I rented a car, like when I came back. There was nothing in the car. I went to the alley for forty minutes, came out and, you know, interestingly, I didn't get a chance to tell this in the other interview, but I remember driving up to a spot that was just in front of the Miss Saigon Restaurant, which is a terrific restaurant if you ever have an opportunity to go, uh, over there to thirty-three eleven Grand Avenue, but I digress. And there was a lady standing in a spot, parking spot, standing in it on the left to me and uh, she kind of like nodded like hello. I thought she was maybe waiting for somebody holding the spot. But I thought nothing other than that. I had just actually, um, caught that. You there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, at any rate, um, uh, as I was saying. I went in, I came out, I, I just dropped my, uh, Godfoils off from the Raiders game. I went in and came out forty minutes later, smashed in. And then I, what was shocked me Nancy, was that people both around Oakland and also at the rent-a-car company in San Francisco at the airport said this happens all the time. It's common. And I was floored.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, like drinking water.
Well, one of the things, one of the things that's happened, Zinni, is we passed Prop forty-seven.
Okay, what was that?
And unless you're, the damage and if insurance is covering it, it's covered.
Mm-hmm.
If it's nine hundred and fifty dollars or less, it's just a slap on the wrist and a misdemeanor. And then all of a sudden we're letting all these guys out of jail because Jerry had to clean the, the prisons out. And guess what? These guys got no jobs. They got no place to go. They got nothing to do. So they can go and break into cars. Cause damage, break into houses. Police aren't gonna respond, just file a report online because guess what? They didn't have a gun and nobody was shot. And that's the only thing that's being responded to because that's what they've been ordered to do. And on top of that, Oakland doesn't have a police department that it had years ago. Because we haven't been able to hire people to fill the positions because people don't want to work in Oakland. But Prop forty-seven's our problem and nobody stops to realize that. And that was voted on by, guess who? Us, the voters.
Mm-hmm.
Because we thought we were doing a good deed protecting these people and now we're paying the price.
Wow.
Because we, we, because anybody, it's less than nine hundred and fifty bucks and as long as insurance is covering, they don't care. So the rental car companies are covered by insurance. So they know what's happening. That's why Safeway, they're constantly robbing Safeway. That's why Safeway, they're constantly robbing Safeway, because guess what? They're not stealing nine hundred and fifty dollars worth of food.
What can we do to solve the problem I asked, because I talked to someone about, like, having mini cameras in front of every property that are networked together, you know, to one website.
The problem with, the problem with cameras is that unless you pay for them yourself, they're not gonna happen in Oakland, because we have a privacy council that seems to think that if, uh, cameras are put up all over the place, that people are going to get found out for some reason, because it's gonna be facial recognition or this, that, and the other. But we can't have it both ways. We can't be screaming that our cars and our houses and our stores are being ripped off, broken into, et cetera. And yet, these people are running around stealing this, that, and the other. I mean, Berkeley's having a big epidemic of i- iPads being stolen right now.
Hmm.
Hey, unless they're worth nine hundred and fifty dollars plus, ain't nothing gonna happen.
And that's just Berkeley.
So, cameras aren't gonna go up, because the privacy council isn't gonna allow it. And Rebecca, she doesn't want anything that's gonna help for the police do their job. So, they're not gonna pass anything in council, cause most of the people on the council are, hate the police.
Uh, moving forward from that, what's your idea to solve Oakland's pension obligation problem, which you know very well?
That's an issue that, that, that goes back years, and it's going to continue to be a problem. Because remember, cash is, Oakland's a cash poor city. And until we have an audit of Oak, of what, where Oakland spends its money and what it's doing with it, it has to be an outside audit, and it can't be paid for by the city of Oakland, because if the city of Oakland's paid for it, they can control it. So, it needs to be something that either comes through the court system or comes from Sacramento. It needs to be ordered, just like other cities, and I can't remember two of their names, one in Southern California, where most of the department, uh, most of the council went to prison because of what was going on down there, and El Zabroni was another one that had the audit done, where they found all kinds of shenanigans going on. And I'm sure that if Oakland ever had the audit done, that there'd be a lot of heads rolling in Oakland as well. But that's the first thing that needs to be done before we talk about the pensions, because we really don't know the real facts of what all this is about. This is a bigger issue, and it's more involved than just saying, oh, we just need to put money aside, like the rainy day fund, and pay the pensions off, cause it's not gonna happen that way. So, until we, and, and until we get an economic base in this town, we're just talking hot air, because guess what? We can't even take care of our streets, the garbage. Every time we turn around, property owners are getting hit through the nose and rear end to raise taxes. And like I said, crime and garbage and homeless are not gonna disappear out of Oakland or get handled, because guess what? As long as we got them, Oakland gets a lot of grant money, and that's part of the problem.
I'm gonna ask you, this is, uh, technically the final question, but I wanna put a spin on it, because you ran a lot. And the question in its standard form is, and what, overall, what issues are you focused on as you run for district, uh, excuse me, as you run for at-large city council seat? But I'm gonna alter that by saying this. Nancy, if you win, what will you do? Because you're great at pointing out problems. But where's, what, what's your plan? What is it that you're going to do? What will your, your actions be, your first action? What will you do if you win?
The first action that I would do if I win is to hire staff that knows Oakland and now knows how to communicate in Oakland, and then work to hire people that can get on the, the, uh, the budget committee, so that they can start studying the budget that knows what they're talking about, not just being on there, because they wanna align their resume. And then I need, and then we need to go out and start talking to people about what needs to be done and how they can participate in making it happen. Cause seven people on the council, eight people on the council cannot do it alone. It has to be an effort of the community, the council, and the departments working together to make that change. And we need to fight to bring back people that actually know and understand Oakland. Oakland is not like every other city. Oakland has its own unique problems, and we've made them ourselves, because it's been over the years that we've allowed this to happen. But we need to take our city back, and that's what I'm fighting for. The first thing I would do is, is start looking for people that understand what the problems are and, and, and come together, so we can start looking for solutions.
Wow. Hey Nancy, how do people get behind your run for office? How do they find you? Um, how do they stay in touch with you and what you're doing?
Uh, they can find me on Facebook, just pull up my name, Nancy Cybulson, and, uh, I'll come up. Uh, my website should be up this, uh, this, in the next two weeks, nancycybulson.com. And, um, I've been around, nannystew@sonic.net, if they wanna email me. And my phone number, five one oh, six three five, two six seven eight, if they have any questions, wanna get involved. And I've never been a person that's asked for money, because I don't think, and this is my thought process, that you should pay somebody to elect them, because then you owe those people. Instead of fighting for the whole, you're, you have to fight for what those people have held you for ransom for. And that's one reason I've never asked for money. But that may change this year, because I understand that, you know, you have to have some money in order to do things, but I don't wanna waste it. I wanna make sure it goes to, for the right reasons if I do raise the money, so that people understand what we're fighting for. Cause this is not a Nancy, I win, I have no interest in leaving Oakland. My love has been here since nineteen sixty-four. I will live here for the rest of my life, and I will continue to fight for Oakland no matter what. So, my looking for another stepping stone to go someplace, not my, not my, not my goal.
Nancy, hey, stick around. I wanna thank you for joining me for yet another rousing and lively interview. I'm blessed to have you. And, uh-
Thank you, sir.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
All right, stick around. Okay.
Thank you.